How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Sarah, yes.
Thanks.
Really good.
It's the first time we've been talking about this.
I think I was thinking about his granddaughter.
Well, I don't need to get that out of my mouth.
That was true.
Yeah.
Because they were doing, they were like last, and they're like, nice to meet you.
Yep.
I totally missed it. But I kind of mean, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
This meeting, I think that, you know, that's something that ordinarily you would want to put some study into. I think for you as council members to identify the sorts of measures and benchmarks that you're looking for will be helpful as we go through this discussion. So just be aware that there are, you want to be very careful as you're identifying what the specific metrics are, what the specific benchmarks are, that they are accurate, that they are measurable, you know, we're not just picking things out of here. It usually will take some time and study and coming back to you, you know, from your administration, from your city manager and her staff to agree with you that there's a, there's a meeting of the minds, that they can accomplish this, that there is a realistic way to measure this and that there's an ability then to report to you on a regular basis, what's going on with those things.
And I, and I would add that, that we have some of those presented to us by our city manager.
Right.
So I think that's sort of the working document that we're playing with and is as starting from, sorry.
All right. So we're going to aim for some sort of consensus that you've made some reasonable progress in getting through at least that prioritization standpoint, the perspective. Now, we're literally, we want to say who's responsible for ensuring this goal is met. Tonight, that's me. My job here is to make sure you get through this process. Now, I want to ask Madam Mayor of, the invitation for this meeting specified that we would be done by eight o'clock. Want to make sure that I understand what the timeframe is. Mr. French has just indicated that he thought eight thirty?
No, I was just pulling a time out of my.
Okay. But let's be, let's be clear about what the timeframe is that we're thinking of here. How long, Madam Mayor or council members, do you want to devote to this? We can go all night. I'm assuming you don't want to do that. The clerk is saying she doesn't want to be here all night. Um, but you know, what's a reasonable time, do you think? And I'm going to, you know, I'm going to turn to you as the leader of the council here. What is the, what, what's a reasonable time, do you think, to devote to what we're doing here this evening?
I would say eight o'clock is, I think, plenty of time for us to go, I guess, hash out and discuss, um, the proposed goals. Um, we've had these in front of us to kind of go over and digest and think about, uh, for a couple of weeks now. So I think it should be eight, two hours. I think there's, there's plenty of time.
Okay. All right. Well, then let's move along here and get into the, get into the actual work, uh, that we want to accomplish. Now I have the ability to, um, once I get there. Excuse me for just a second. Do you all have your smartphone, cell phones with you?
Uh, we'll need permission from the mayor to allow us to use cell phones in the council.
We can't use.
All right.
They use the main.
I don't think so.
Hazel, Hazel's got hers.
And I, I would ask that while the members of the audience may very well have cell phones as well, this part of it isn't for you. Along with the council members. Want to do here is to go through a very quick, um, exercise with you to have you prioritize the focus areas and then the individual, what I call goals that are below the focus areas. And so this will give you an opportunity, you'll see this when we get here, but it'll give you an opportunity to use sliders to kind of decide, kind of, you know, say individually, is this a low priority? Is this a high priority in your eyes? Or does it fall somewhere in the middle? So what I'd ask you to do, if you have a phone that you can grab a QR code, you can do that. If not, if you open up a browser on your phone, and go to menti.com, M E N T I dot com. You can. And when you get there, you should be able to, it should come up and you'll have a little heart at the bottom or thumbs up at the bottom. If you punch that, that'll just indicate that you have connected to it.
What's the website again?
M E N T I dot com, menti, M E N T I dot com. And there is a code that I will give you if you're trying to connect that.
Can you get it on?
I can't get it.
Hey Scott. She's having some access issues if you want to.
Is it, is she doing the QR code or?
Yeah.
Just go.
She can't get online. Her wifi connection is crap.
Oh. Will take just a minute here. Ryan's going to everybody. What's that?
I'm overachiever, I suppose.
And we've got one connected. You take a picture of that one?
Yeah, she's got it. She just got to put the number in.
Put the code in there.
Okay, thank you. Can anybody get along this last one? That was a fantasy.
Looks like it's doing something.
Uh-oh. This one? I don't know, it seems like it's. But it's not giving you. Here, I'm gonna do this. All right, now reconnect it. Or, you know.
Those are actual ones, you betcha.
That worked at all.
Why do I gotta use all that?
And sorry.
I got him, but I can't. Oh. Create, uh, how we can create your, like, one to the thumbs up or what?
Oh, now I understand.
But you have ninety-nine. You have ninety-nine web images.
He says that page is good with the blue in there, like this.
Is it?
Yeah, you said it. Maybe we'll be waiting instructions.
All right, I think there's somebody still not connected.
Yeah, LAN is, we're having trouble with LAN.
I don't know, I didn't connect it many times.
It's all my stuff.
I added and, and they changed.
Yeah, well, we tried that and so.
Yeah, all right. Push the thumbs up sign at the bottom there.
That's what we hit.
All right. Okay, I have six connected. That's everybody. All right, that was the easy part. So now you should see it differently. You should see this on your phones. And you are going to take in each one of those areas. These are the four focus areas that you're, um, and I've summarized the titles a little bit for you here, but these are the four focus areas from your, you know, from your sheet. And all you need to do is just move the sliders over for each one of them. Low priority is on the left, high priority is on the right. These are all individual ratings and we won't know who it is that's voting in which direction. So this is, uh, this is your choice as to how you want it to rate these.
All right, so we're having trouble over here. She got. She didn't capture the code is the issue.
It didn't come with it. Okay.
Okay, so you have a slide on there for the west meeting. So you gotta go through them all though.
All right, well.
QR code.
Now, you, how do you get to your apps? It's, it's, people with iPhones are obviously having the trouble. How do you get to your windows of apps that are open? Oh, those are all your apps, the windows that are open. Like you have a website that we need to put the code in.
Just go.
Need to be able to vote. That's, that's the whole point.
You can start over.
Can you put the app, I mean, the, uh.
But yeah, but she needs the menti.com, so open your Safari. Okay, what's the code? Seven, six, four.
That's too many numbers.
Seven, six, four.
It's not.
It's up there at the top.
Seven, six, one, four, five, two, two, five.
Yeah, but she's, she's got a different, oh, you need the outlook code. That's what you. Oh my God.
All right, you know what? I didn't really get it.
No, no, we can get it. It's just a matter of.
Only got three that are in so far, so I think we're having more difficulty than is warranted here. Okay? All right, we can pull. At four votes here.
Yeah, who's not in there?
And I think you definitely have to click that thumbs up.
Well, she hasn't even, she did that part already, but then it was, but she got an alert about a security or two factor authentication. And we needed a five-digit code and, and we don't know what that five-digit code is and our IT guy left.
Who else is having difficulty in?
I think, I think.
It's only, I've only got four votes in. There should be, should be at least five.
Oh, great.
This is the beauty of modern technology.
I just hit something lost it off.
They'll find the app. Yeah, hang on. There we go. There we go.
Okay, we got.
Good, we did it. All right, we're almost there.
You just, all you do is slide over now.
And there's more, but don't, you know, don't change anything on your phones. The next slide will come up here in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay.
That's where you got kicked off that.
All right, boom, okay. All right, so just real quickly, you can see you're all pretty much in the same ballpark here, all of these. There are a little bit of variation here, but they're all in about the same arena, which indicates that there's no one of these that you're identifying that is a specific, you know, a larger priority that outshines all the rest of them in terms of the focus areas that you identified. And that's a good sign. You spent some time on this last year. You're still okay with what you've come up with. Now we'll come back and ask after we're all done with this rating. Are there other focus areas that maybe should be included on the list? But we'll get there in a minute. Let's move on to the next one. These are goals that fall under the first of those, um, the first of those focus areas, which was improving infrastructure and city services. So I've listed out the four, uh, um, goal areas, uh, you know, which, and again, I've summarized them, but they come right off your list here. So once again, you want to go through and prior, yeah, indicate your priorities for all of those. Okay, everybody's in much faster than the last time. Getting the hang of this. I promise we don't have a lot more of this. And so you'll see there is some variation here. Some of these, the roads are obviously the top priority. And when you kind of look in the, when you look at this, uh, and you'll see there's variations. This is a little hard to see, but let's take damage. It's here is a perfect example. The three point two rating out of five puts you kind of in the middle, but there's two groups here that you can see by these lighter colored, um, pumps, if you will, and those are an indication that there's variation. So you're, you're not all on the same page as it relates to them. So don't be deceived by the average score. That's averaging. Some people don't think this is a very important issue at all. Other people thinks, yeah, this is a pretty important issue. But collectively, you're kind of right in the middle of that. And when I'm, you know, when I give my summary report, I will include photo copies of these, the, well, the actual images so that you can have that and remember how your ratings, uh, you know, shaped up on the individual, uh, the individual scores here. So, but clearly Rhodes is an important one for you. All right, we're going to move on to the next area then. This is, I call this destination Albion. That was just my way of summarizing your idea of making Albion a destination. And again, you have four different goal areas that are four different goals that you want to accomplish related to that. You know, you all end up, again, about the same area in all of these, but you're all the same range. Generally, there is some variation that you see on the top one, uh, for some, you know, a fair number. Uh, we're kind of in the middle on that and then some toward the end, that sort of balance that off. The other ones, uh, you're, there's a parity created in the, in terms of your ratings and all of those different goals, uh, you know, are about the same priority for you. All right. And then I think we are at the final one here. This is actually two different goals and I put them together because you've only got one goal under, uh, these are two focus areas and there were just one goal for each of those two focus areas. So you're dealing with both partnerships and also strengthening your financial position and building capacity. And I, my summaries here of what your goals set. Okay. So we have all the votes in now for all of these areas. You've seen how you voted. Any comments about, about this? Any surprises here? Any observations about your ratings? That come to mind?
In the last slide, the fact that half of us put transparency in the middle instead of high was surprising.
All right. We can actually go back and take a look at that.
Yeah, it looks like it's split.
Yeah.
It is.
Enhanced community.
Yeah, because, you know, about half that put it in the middle and about half that put it high. What do you think that reflects?
The competition for housing needs enhanced community program.
Yeah.
I think we definitely have a need for, for programming. Um, we had a lot of programming in the past that provided a lot of opportunity for people in the community. So, you know, it's just competing in most of the other things.
Okay.
I was trying to just surprise to see that the housing is the lowest out of the four, when I think we've had a lot of conversation about wanting to adjust the housing stock or needing more housing stock. I would assume that that would have been.
Kind of, yeah. And especially since, you know, the destination part of it is higher. You have to have someplace to live if the destination is here, so.
Yeah, especially with the job.
Yeah.
And also think in the following slide with the, um, revitalization, that kind of plays into the housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we all know we can't do much if we don't have the housing. If we don't sort our housing situation, we won't be able to do any of the other, for the most part.
Any other thoughts on your ratings? Okay, kind of keep those in mind as we go along here and talk about this a little bit more. I want to ask you, as I indicated I was going to, you've identified through your process last year, the four focus areas that we discussed here as we went along. Are there other areas of focus that you think should be on this list that are not? So just to refresh your memories. And you, I, I know you must all have this in front of you, but the first focus area was improving infrastructure and city services. Second focus area was making Albion a destination. The third focus area was to build and strengthen strategic partnerships. And the fourth focus area was to strengthen financial position and increase capacity to respond to challenges.
One thing that I noticed was missing was DEI uh, in terms of, uh, diversity and equity and inclusion, uh, as a goal in terms of public safety and in terms of, you know, different areas to make it specifically, uh, addressed.
All right.
To speak.
Now, I believe that there was a reference, if I'm not mistaken, to diversity and inclusiveness within, I think, as I recall, specifically within public safety.
Yeah.
Um, but may apply more broadly than correctly, Snyder, um. But I know that there was a specific reference to that in terms of internal, that had to do with, with, um, the goal of making the city organization a destination for work, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, it's under, if you're looking at, but this is focus area two. I have a number of these things, so it's the second group of them, identify solutions to make city value and a destination to work. This is promote diversity and include and then the Department of Public Safety ranks veteran lack the community now. So there is a reference there specifically to the Department of Public Safety. I don't think, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't recall seeing that in terms of a larger city organization, city government organization. And I didn't see it in terms of references in the community as a whole, whether there should be diversity, equity and, and inclusion efforts. So I.
But it should be in the city hall destination too, not, not just public safety.
Okay. So you would think that it should be more broadly stated?
That's, that was my point, you know. Of course, we want public safety, but we want to reflect the community throughout.
Mm-hmm. So when we talk about this issue of diversity, equity and, or diversity, equity and inclusion, your comment is that this should be, uh, applicable beyond public safety, the, the Department of Public Safety.
Yes.
And how, and do you feel that there should be a role? I just want to be clear. Do you feel there should be uh, efforts that the city undertakes with regard to the community as a whole besides?
Yes.
All right.
I got a question.
And we'll have an opportunity to go along here to talk, I'm sorry, yes, I, I, just a second. So we'll have an opportunity to talk about any, anything else that's on this list that you think might need to be changed, modified, uh, uh, restated, whatever. Now, Mr. Williams?
Actually, you know what? I just found, I just found what I was looking for. It's already in there. No problem. I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. As I recall, Mr. Williams, you were offered a lot of comments when I was here.
Possibly. That's a compliment. That's a compliment. That's an engaged councilman.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, thank you.
I, 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 if you, you might remember that I had to tell him that we're all, we need to be here from. Dominating, by the end of my mind, you're dominating the, the, the whole conversation.
Fantastic.
I had to apologize afterwards for, for shutting it down. Let's talk about those broader focus area. Are there any other areas that may have come up in the court? And I'm not asking you to invent them. Is this still, does this still really capture where you want to go? Or are there any other broad focus areas besides these that you think should be, uh, you know, should be an area that you're, you're spending your resources and efforts on? Has anything come up in the course of the last year where you say we really need to be focused on? I mean, there's a number of these things that are, that are certainly very, very important, you know, that you've got included in your goals here. But in terms of those broad focus areas, there's nothing else. And what we can do is we can approach this in a different way, as you're identifying perhaps some other goals that didn't make it onto the list. And we can maybe see whether those translate into an additional focus area. One thing that I would caution is that in my, well, city manager perspective, there's already a lot on this list. This is all, this is an ambitious program for you. And, you know, the one thing I would encourage and perhaps this is information that I don't have, um, is to timeframes on accomplishing some of these things. And I don't know if that's been, if you have those and they're just not here or you've not gone, you've not gone that hard in terms of identifying when you voted. Or are these all things you were intending to accomplish by the end of, you know, June of twenty twenty-five?
I would say some of them are definitely, um, able to be accomplished within the year, but then there are some that are going to be carryover into the next, the next year. And I think once council have approved that this is what they would like to see, then the, we will connect internally and then really identify, hone in on the timelines.
I think that's very important. I think it would be important in terms of continuing to report to the council on what progress is that you're making.
And as, oh, I'm sorry, Vivian, go ahead. And as you asked your question, I'm thinking, you know, is there something we are missing that, uh, other cities have, have, you know, are engaging in? I had, I'm wondering, what are you thinking?
Well, here's what I think, and that is every community is unique. I had in the last two months done strategic plan, facilitated strategic planning exercises for two other communities. And, uh, and I can name them, they're not, it's not secret, L'Pier and Porchira. So community about your size and the community that's three times your size. Each of those communities is different. Each of them has its own priorities. So one thing that comes up everywhere is housing. Housing is something that is talked about, I think, in almost every community, certainly every standalone community and the older communities in the state like the Albians out there, they're all seeing housing as a key issue. You've identified in your goals here, the missing middle and workforce housing. Those are the things that are being talked, talked about everywhere and for all the same reasons. Those are the things that are being talked, talked about everywhere and for all the same reasons. You know, it's a competitive environment out there to get residents to come to your community. Competitive environment to attract workforce to fill the jobs in your. And so, and it is a real challenge to provide affordable housing in every community. And so every community is looking at it, doing exactly those kinds of things. Many of them are focused on infrastructure because particularly in the older communities, that infrastructure was put in maybe seventy-five or a hundred years ago. Is clearly in need of replacement. So those things are things that you're going to see in just about every community. But there are things that are unique to every community as well. So Porcheron, for example. Very focused on redevelopment of their waterfront. They're interestingly, you know, for here on one of the areas that is a big concern of theirs. Is the relationship they have with Sarnia and with Canada right across the, the Blue River Bridge. So their economy is very dependent on that relationship and the, and what's happened, interestingly enough, is that. The shift of border control efforts to our southern US border means that it takes longer to get across the border bridge. That's a very, very unique concern of theirs as they're looking at the future. But so. Things are unique here, but then there are some areas that are specific to you. Or that are more generally applicable to communities um elsewhere. Up to you to identify, then what are the areas that you're going to want to focus on? I think it's useful to keep in mind what's going on in other communities. You're all competing for that, the, you know, residents, you're all competing for uh workforce. All of those things are things that uh, you know, put you in competition with other communities. It means you've got to try and put your best before we're not all.
Uh, so if, if I were to say anything about uh, like another. Um, focus area, it would be to reestablish the middle class here in Albion. Now, that's definitely not something that's gonna happen in a year.
But also it depends on what, what you define as the middle class, because people of wealth in Albion are not wealthy if they were elsewhere.
That's true too.
So it's, it's gonna be a.
Here, um, where does? Maybe this isn't a governmental issue, but it's healthcare. Or in, in terms of our responsibility. Albion, Albion, Calvin County has some of the highest rates of. Diabetes and sudden air liftoff and high blood pressure and all of those illnesses. Is that something that we can at least be vigilant of, or do we just step back and let someone else take care of it?
So perhaps if we look under um. Focus area one. Maybe it's addition to the last point, develop an enhanced community program. He could take some sort of leadership. In part or under the partnership section, which is.
Identify salute. Here's C, create and implement an internal wellness program. Is that just with city government?
Well, I think it's because we also have things about strengthening partnerships. That maybe it goes, falls under that, that we will establish here. A, a partnership between the city of Albion and, and pick your favorite seven. Healthcare providers or what have you.
To address some of the.
To help educate the public about health needs and opportunities so that folks are connected to the resources that they need, you know, we. That's a great idea.
Under uh, focus area two, the developing the hands community program.
Yeah.
They probably can be encompassed under there too.
Yeah, that's, that's where I started. And it's also under focus area three.
Yeah.
With the partnerships.
Focus area three with the partnerships.
Yeah.
Yeah, healthcare is not something you'll do on your own.
Right, no.
You'll do that in conjunction with other providers, uh, and, and perhaps others who share that same interest here in the community.
Well, I think you know, as, as we continue to have our. Uh, walks, uh, trails and things like that, that's probably gonna help too, because people can get out. And, and do things that'll help them.
Yep.
Keep their weight and other things.
The recreational opportunities.
And we have to take advantage of.
And these, yeah, and provide opportunities for education of. Other sorts of healthcare related opportunities, whether it's, you know, diabetes class or, you know, CPR being offered by the um. By Kella Community College or what have you, that we create some sort of infrastructure. Whether it's electronic or like on our website, you know, ad and page. Connecting to those partnerships that exist so that people can. You know, find those. And we are somewhere with the senior center, don't we?
What's that?
The, the council on aging, we get to, we have some say, don't we, and resources being brought. That'll be related to that.
The, a portion of the recreation mileage goes to the Fort Senior Center.
Yeah.
And Albion Healthcare Alliance and so, we, we are addressing it, but more work is needed in terms of. Education and implementation.
Yeah.
Who's responsibility in the organization is that?
Well, it could be the community ambassador. Yeah, that's a great question.
And that's whose responsibility is it to ensure that we. Utilize.
Who in the city staff, I think, is gonna take the lead on. On making that happen.
Yes, I guess we.
Here's, here's, here's the reason, I, here's the reason that I ask the question. It is easy to add, add to the list. To come up with the staff time necessary to devote actually composition, right? And this is where the prioritization comes in for you. We're going to go down through the list here today. And look at these things, you know, I want to challenge you to make a decision. How important are these things? That you're gonna want to take the staff resources and the potentially the financial resources away from other kinds of things. To get them done.
You know, you know, one, another way to look at it is we are representatives of precincts. And in our individual precincts or collectively. Um, you know, we can, we can bring res- resources in. I mean, we have a. A job to do also. We just can't sit back and say, this is staff's responsibility. So as precinct representative, some of these things are happening in our precincts. We can be instrumental in taking some leadership roles and bringing consultants in. Establishing a walking trail or walking group. So I think all of us.
Here's one of the things that I would encourage, that is, when you're thinking about some of the things. And the healthcare, health focus is a good one to use as an example for this. And that is, this might not be right yet to have staff involved. This is something, particularly talking about partnerships, that what you really want to do. Ms. Davis, since you're the one that brought this up and you're passionate about it, and maybe there's another council member who's equal and you're passionate. This is where you start gathering people in the community together and start having a conversation about how might we. Take this on as a community and then better define the role of local government in that. And so, you know, I happen to know that Ms. Davis is an active member of the Rotary Club here, for example. We see one another at Rotary events a lot. And so there's one of the community organizations that perhaps can be engaged in thinking about that. And there are likely others here as well that could be involved in that. At that discussion stage to think about what does the community, how do we assess that? And then what is the appropriate role for local government? What's the appropriate role for city government? And so you, you as represented is not only a precinct, but of, you know, the government as whole. Are in a unique position to go out in the community and speak with voice of authority and say, we think this is an issue. Or I think this is an issue that we should be spending some more time on. What can we do as a community? You know, and look at what other communities that are similarly situated have done in order to address the unique health needs of their bodies.
Vivian Davis, a great healthcare task force.
Well, I'm, I'm on, you know, I'm on. All the committees, so that would be very difficult to do.
Thank you for saying.
If I may suggest that we turn to your goal statements here and kind of go down through them one at a time. Just to have some conversation about, did you think maybe you ought to come off the list here or not as high? You know, some that are higher priority, some that are not. I'd like to, to spend some time with you and hear your feelings about it on an individual basis. So, you know, I'm, these are numbered, but it's focus area number one, and then identify solutions to address broken conditions. Are there any things on that were a high priority area for you when you did your rating? Pretty much the same with few exceptions, but this is one that, you know, you clearly wanted us to uh make some investments in. Are there any things that are on this list that you think are less important than others? Or is there something that should be on this list that is not?
I think of the four that are listed here, I would say C should probably be a top priority. And then Greg, I'm sure you've probably heard this through other communities. Roads is probably the biggest component that I get as mayor, like. If I'm getting somebody who's complaining, it's typically about the roads. Um, so I think if we can put a strategy in place. To address the current road conditions, because we don't, right now, you know, we have limited funds, but I think. Based on what we do have to work with, I think having a maintenance plan. Giving all the roads that we have within the city limits. We'll figure out where and how we're gonna address. I think that would be a top priority. At least in my opinion.
And is B close to being finished, given our funding for that Big Water project?
Yes, that's, yes, in the works.
So do you feel like we could remove it or move it to a lower priority or keep it high until it's done and then move to the next one? What's the?
I would say, I mean, since it's in the process, it could be a lower priority.
Any other thoughts on those items? And by the way, Madam Mayor, I do agree with you. You want to invest, my city manager speaking here, uh, uh, you do want to invest in. Good preventive maintenance programs, because it prevents your streets from falling into further disrepair. And the more money, you really want to have a good balance in terms of the limited resources you have, keep those good streets in good shape. Try to keep those that are not so good from deteriorating too much more rapidly and then spend, you know. Otherwise, you've just got more and more needs that are piling up for reconstruction later on. So having a good approach to where you're shifting that. The dollars around to make, you know, to make good use of them and prevent, you know. Spending the money on prevention will ultimately stretch the dollars that you have a lot further. It's one of the. Back in one of the communities that I served, we evaluated their road conditions every single year and. We had a specific way of looking at those numbers, and I decided that maybe a different way of looking at them would. Tell us a different story. And what we discovered in doing it is that we were not spending enough on preventive maintenance. And so we. Significantly increased the amount of sealing of roads that we were doing, the amount of crack sealing that we were doing and those kinds of things. In order to slow the rate of deterioration down. And I'm assuming that you're probably having Pazer ratings done. Are you doing on an annual basis here? Making sure that you're getting those Pazer ratings and looking at what the numbers tell you. Uh, that rate of deterioration will show up very, very easily in there. And so if you have streets that are rated in the higher condition, but they're. Falling out of that condition, that's a, if that tells you there's an area where you want to spend some of your budget dollars. To make sure that you're slowing that rate of deterioration down where you can. It's a very prudent use of, of your, uh, of your limited dollars that you have available to you. All right, let's move on and talk about the, the second area, uh, lead and copper. Main replacements. Now, you've got water, you said main lines. Uh, do you actually have water mains that are lead and copper? Are we talking about service lines going in?
Service.
Okay, these are service lines.
And this is something that we're doing now, right? So the timeline is going to be twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five.
For, I would say for A, I mean, we're required by the state, um, the deadline to have those um. Surface lines identified is October of this year. Um, it's been moved up. It was by the end of December. Um, but now they are required that we have that information by October. So I would say A is definitely. A top priority because we're required to submit that information to the state. Um, but then B and C, those. C could be within the year, but I would say it would probably carry over to twenty twenty-five. And then the water system improvement project will be a multi-year project as well.
Are you far enough along in your identification of. Service lines to be able to estimate like how large a, a program you're going to have to have?
Yes, we are. We secured um grant funding last year and started um last year, and then we're required to do so many each year prior to, before that, but yes.
Now, don't we have a timeline, like, hmm, that it has to be done inside of?
So, yeah, we have to identify them by October of this year, and then they have to be replaced by, I want to say it's twenty forty.
And what is your goal? You know, twenty forty is a long way off.
It, it is, but honestly, I mean, it'll be here before we know it to, I would say, within. The state's requirement, at least for sure by twenty forty. Are able to accomplish it before then, that's, that's.
Well, and then, but that's, you know, that's. Where your decisions about what is the timeframe that you wish to do this becomes significant for you. So let's say that twenty forty is not accepted in the council and they want to have this done by twenty thirty. Well, significant acceleration, that then translates into, I would assume. Increasing your utility rates in order to be able to afford the contractors that, you know, would come along with it. And that's how, I use this as an illustration. I'm not advocating one position or another. Merely illustrating how your decisions about priorities, your setting goals with timelines then translates into actions. That you need to take as it relates to budget and setting utility rates and, and those kinds of things. And so what you end up with is an iterative process here where. Come along session like this, replacing light and copper water lines is a high, you know, high, high priority for us. And so we really want to move forward. We want to get this done a lot more quickly. You come back and say, we can accelerate this to twenty thirty. But it's gonna cost this many dollars and we're gonna have to, you know, increase our utility rates by third or whatever it might be. That's where you come back and say, that's not affordable for our residents. We're going to have to accept the fact that it's going to take us longer to get this done. And so that's the back and forth. That so, and the only way you can have that is if you have that information available to, to be able to make those. You would, so have the information provided to you so that you can make those kinds of choices. And that's the, that's the given template that I've, you know, in my role here, you're not gonna get very far with what I'm going to do with you here this evening. I'm gonna raise some issues and trying to gain some sense that will pass on to your staff. And that involves a lot of this back and forth with them to. Ultimately have you made the policy choices that you make, including setting budgets, setting utility rates and those kinds of. ultimately have you make the policy choices that you make, including setting budgets, setting utility rates and those kinds of things on this particular issue. And everybody goes through this, not to me, to you, that's the way it works every, you don't have unlimited dollars. You just don't. And I have certainly been in a position with city councils that I've worked with in the past, they just don't like the idea of raising water rates, you know? We've already done it once, significantly, in our water project.
That's been done.
It is, it is, it's a hard choice to make, and we all understand that it is. By the same token, you've got aging infrastructure. In, like every other older community, you have aging infrastructure, it's going to cost money. And then if you're like a lot of other communities, you have not invested, you know, along the way. And now it's caught up to you. A lot of the activity, the person in the post World War Two era, think about how long ago that is. It doesn't seem, it seems like it's just yesterday, but that's, you know, it's a long time away. It's eighty years after that cruel that occurred at the end of World War Two. Those investments that were made then are well beyond their useful life, and it's all caught up to all of us here. We're in the same position as everybody else.
But then you go back to the fact that you don't have houses and jobs here to create the money that you would get from the water bill.
That's right. That's correct. All of those things present unique challenges for you, and it doesn't mean they can't be solved. It just means you have to be thoughtful and diligent about attacking these problems one at a time. All right, let's move on and talk about dams. There was a significant variation in perspectives on dams in the community. What do you want to tell me about your feeling about dams?
I think dams are out of sight, out of mind. For the most part, unless you live by the river. Now, that's not to say that they shouldn't be discussed at all. Um, I think it's a hot topic because of funding that was received, um, to help with the dams and the fact that we have so many dams. So, um, I think that's why it's actually on the, the, the.
And we've done one and two already.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's just a matter of securing the funding and.
Are these dams in danger of failing?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Flooding, flooding could result in a.
It's a, it's a real, it's a real dam problem.
I, I assumed if I talk long enough about this topic, someone would use an expression like.
Some guys don't do it.
This kind of goes back to what I was saying about the safety of our community. Having the dams in place does cause safety issues.
Yeah.
We had.
Yes.
Also whole drought.
Yes, and that, yeah.
Do, do you need these dams?
No.
Well, I guess it would depend on who you ask. Um, because I, I don't know about you guys, but I've been getting an earful of both sides of why it's a good idea, why it's a bad idea. Um, and I, I just think that this is something else that we need to educate our community on. Um, because I think people are not truly understanding the whole skull and what it could do. So, but again, for me, that's a safety issue.
They're not used in the way that they were back years ago when they were primary source of power. That's not what they are there for. And it's another piece of our infrastructure that has been with limited resources, just kind of kicked down the road. And we're at a point to where we need to address them because, um, the evaluations that they have or inspections that they have, we've received failing scores. And that's kind of back in twenty nineteen, we had an issue to where one was on the brink of possible failure. And so that we stepped, we took the funding feasibility study on, okay, what can we do with them? And now where that's taken a few years and now we're at the next step. Actually, our Monday meeting will be, I think, a big decision that this board will need to make on, okay, what do we do to address them?
And as you're well aware, all the communities are seriously exploring that game. For the environmental benefits that result from that. It's a process that takes a while to do, and there's certainly, uh, it's not, it's not without its costs to do that. A lot of times you have to be behind, it's accumulated behind dams, some of which is environmental hazards on its own. It needs to be properly taken care of. So there are some, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough issue.
It is, and I think since the failure from the one up north a few years ago, the state's really been pushing to, um, the communities that have these, um, pieces of infrastructure in their community to remove them and return the water rates back to their normal flow. And I think this is a time where a lot of funding is available to do just that instead of the maintenance and keep them or just not do anything.
Or leaving it up to the city, and a lot of times the city don't, won't have the resources. So at least they funding is here now, so it's time to do it.
And the dams are all yours, you're the owners of these dams.
Three out of the five.
Three out of five.
Yes.
So explain to me then why you didn't, you weren't unanimous on, you weren't about dams.
I think it's about.
You had a split.
I think it was more about how you prioritize.
I think that's exactly right. Yeah, if we think about, if we think about the things that are, you know, it's this competition between what's the low hanging fruit for external funding? Um, and what's really an important priority for our city? So, you know, we were to, I would bet you'd have a unanimous view about which would you rather work hardest on? Housing or the dams?
Right, roads.
Or roads, right?
Yes.
Right. I think, I think dams are third, right, of those three. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't go after them, um, the fact that so many of them, my precinct, um, does, excuse me, yeah, I voted, because it is, I mean, I think there, there's, the way that the mill race and the dams are structured now is causing further erosion of roads and property. And so getting it fixed, there's a huge impact. There's, you know, there's an entire street that is surrounded by the mill race and the river, and they're eroding inward. And so that's a problem. So getting it fixed is my priority for me. But I also deeply respect the fact that I still would probably prioritize housing and roads over it. But if there's low hanging fruit for money from the outside, the fence of the state, then we definitely have to go after it.
Right, so you know, the approach you might take on something with the plans.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing.
How you put the plans in place and then.
Yeah.
Go looking for resources to find your.
Yeah.
And she's done a good job of.
That's Monday.
Yeah, uh, um, city manager has done a good job of identifying resources and bringing them to the community, so.
Yeah, and, and that's clearly the direction. And that's really the way you've laid out your goals in this. You don't have it all here, instead you're going to, you know, remove these dams by, you know.
Twenty six.
But, okay, putting the plans out and then you're having those conversations. I can tell you from experience with a couple of fans, not in, not in any community I've lived in. But major communities, it takes a long time. City of Corona, with its one dam, I think it's a one year conversation.
Well, we're working on about fourteen right now. Because when I first went on council in twenty ten, we started talking about dam. So. Chief Kip and I had this great idea of how to solve a bunch of burn, kill a bunch of birds with one stone regarding the Linden Avenue dam and the mill race, but.
Just blow it up?
No, it was, it was different. It basically put in a storm drain and covered up and make that the new Linden Avenue. You don't allow fire. Scott had the whole plant, fire engine access to southeast side. But, but the fact we were talking about it in ten. And I'm just excited that we're going to be approving a plan one day, whether it takes us five, ten more years to get it done. The fact that we've managed a place that we have grew up to move forward is, I call that good, and then we can focus on, I was saying, infrastructure and.
No, I think they all, they all rank high infrastructure wise. Um, like you said, it's, what can we actually do? But the dams are important, and we've seen in other communities where they've taken them out and it's beautified the community. I know we mentioned, um,
Suresco.
Suresco quite a bit, and you just ride through there sometimes, like you used to ride through there, see the dam, you're like, what is that? Now you go through there and it's just wide open river. Um, so, yeah, it's, I think it's necessary.
It also helps the, um, individuals where they stay close to like En- En- Enbarn's Park, individuals that are very close to the, to the water, the lily pads and all that. So that's why I have impressed so hard with trying to, um, get the extra, which we do need, the extra dollars and cents to, you know, take care of the little paths so they don't grow up, because people are not able to go down here and fish like they used to. If we can get that taken care of and beautify our areas as well.
Yeah, people who live along the river, who benefit from having dams, those are people that, you know, need to be brought along in the conversation. So we can remove A and B from that, right? Because both of those have happened.
A has, B has not. So if you, for our last meeting, those, that's going to continue throughout the entire process.
Okay.
Um, not only with the community as a whole, but really the residents who live along the route of waterways. I know the project, the junior, she stressed that they will really be involved in that design process and make sure their voices are heard. So I would recommend leaving B. Um, A, yeah, A happened last Monday, and you guys are going to make the decision, I believe, from today.
Okay.
We're leaving on and saying we were proactive and to.
Well, it's nice to be able to cross some things up in this. Let's move on and then and talk a little bit about, you know, some of the internal processes of the organization here. That's the fourth goal that you had. This is, you know, just a number of things to try and make city hall work a little better than it must have been. We just need a month.
Yeah, I was pleased to see, you know, uh, more streamlined financial department in terms of paying online. We're one of the few, you know, areas, but you know, you, you pay, I pay all of my bills online, but I can't pay on water bill. So I think that's something that the citizens can see, can, you know, can experience that we are making improvements. So I think that's a good.
And I would comment that this is, I mean, it's important to list these things on here and have these conversations. But this is something that's just an ordinary part of doing business, that you're always looking for, how do we do these basic operations better? I will say, one point of opportunity for you could be a little easier to find your income tax forms and what they are.
Sure.
Having had to call down here and say, little did I know, when I worked for you last year, that I was going to have to pay you income tax or at least file form. I don't know that you're going to get any money back from me, but you are going to get my time spent. And you're not the only one that helps any. Got about two and a half weeks, buddy. I'll have to do it again next year, but.
Then it'll be streamlined.
Somebody in that department was very helpful in calling me back and saying, here is where you need to go to find us. But as compared to other places that I've had looking for similar forms, um, yours is a little harder to find on the website.
Good to know.
What, what I think. Don't make that change just for me. Sure.
It's, um, that's feedback that we've gotten, um, yeah. Because a lot of people don't know that we have the local, that there is the local income tax. So I know our finance office, that is a priority for them to make sure that our community is educated on, on that, that we have that in place, what it is used for and, um, going after not only the delinquent income tax that we have not received, but then just really educating, make sure people are aware.
So I don't know that I would suggest any, this is one you're just going to always have in some fashion on the list, whether it's on your priority list or not. I mean, these are just my view, these are internal processes. However, what I would ask is, are there other areas that you're aware of that are not on this list? You think we, we, that you think you as an organization might want to spend, uh, some effort on something you may have heard it from your constituents about that's not on this list? That you would want to make sure to call to Ms. Snyder's attention? If not now, you know, those are always things to keep in mind. And I think it's such a useful role that council members play to carry that information from residents who say, you know, I wanted to do this and I just couldn't find it on the website. Or, you know, this is a, this is what happened to me when I came down to pay my utility bill or whatever. I think that all of those things are just ways of always trying to refine and improve and do better, that the, you know, the way you do things. So. All right, let's move on and talk a little bit about making Albion a destination.
So the first goal area here, strengthen transparency and communication with residents and community stakeholders. Well, just out of curiosity, just so I know, what kind of communication that an ambassador? What, what do you have in the way of a communications office?
We don't have one. Um, and so that's, the city has partnered with other outside organizations to bring this community ambassador position in place to help, um, strengthen the communications, not only with the city, but other organizations here in, in our community to really put information out there. Because, yes, we don't have a formal marketing or communications department.
Who's, you have a Facebook page, I assume?
We do.
Manage that.
Um, it was before the community ambassador, our city clerk and our, our chief, um, chief Kip did. But now since the community ambassador has come on board, she's really taken the lead in making sure that we, um, post uh, on our Facebook page, we've also just created an Instagram page, so trying to connect with the different generational groups in our community. Because different age groups use different social media platforms.
As you're working your way through the other things on your goal list here, having ways to communicate with your residents regularly and effectively with ways that they will do it. And that means using all of the resources that we can, not the social media, will be really important, I think. And, and this is one area that when you ask about what are other communities doing? This is where other communities are trying to make sure that they have that good um, communication strategy for their residents. And the difference in the, between the old and what we do today, and the difference between transparency and communication in this. Transparency, you're maybe available if anybody comes looking. But a communication strategy, you're pushing information out there so that people know what's going on. Particularly, you know, these days, you know, you don't have the kind of newsrooms that you have oftentimes in many communities. A lot of communities don't have newspapers anymore when people are reading. If you're in one of them that does, that's great.
Well, she's here.
Think about who your stakeholders are, that, you know, that you need to reach out to as well. Make sure that, that communicating them to ways in, that they can use that information, that they can be your biggest boosters. And that's your strategy here about making the community a destination, I mean, you want people talking about you. And everybody is always happy to talk about your problem.
Yes.
But you want people to talk about stuff you're doing right. You've got a lot of things on your list here that are things that you're going to want to talk about. We've done this.
Correct.
We've accomplished this, we're working on this. You know, and some of it is just, you know, you do want to communicate with people, you do something with a dance. That's a long time conversation and people are, you want to make sure that it's in front of people from time to time. So thinking about how you organize around communications, I think it's something that's important. Anything else in the area of transparency and communication? It seems like I'm doing all the talking.
I think communication has been built out a little more, um, over the past year with the newsletters and, um, the, the Facebook page and things. So I think that's something that's improved recently.
Did we want to, um, add the healthcare to this section or are we going to push that to another focus area?
Well, that could be something that is positive, that could be, you know, announcements and activities and programs and things like that. That could fall on, under communication in terms of we're taking a vested interest in the health of our residents.
Yeah, so maybe it's under E, we just sort of expand number, the letter E. So could I name your programs on, but we could also say, um, on health accessibility or, uh.
Initiatives.
Initiatives, yeah. Initiatives, yeah. So less of a focus on ADPS, but more on. Other, other, um. Community stakeholders, so.
So we put in healthcare under E?
Yeah, some parts, some aspects. I think it's going to end up in a couple of different places.
Yeah.
But I think from a communication point of view, I think that could be a priority.
And then when the representative meeting gets up and walked out. All right, let's talk about the city as a destination for work. This is really looking at, as I understand the subjective. Looking at how you make sure you've got the staff here and that those that staff members are. You're all of them are ambassadors and you're really reaching out to them, finding out what's, you know, what's working, what's maybe not working. Looking at what changes and benefits are going to be important. Talk a little bit about diversity of your workforce as a priority for you. Anything else in this area that? It's not, it's for areas that, you know, you might want to change or drop off or whatever. Having a good workforce is key for you to accomplish the rest of your objectives. I think, um. You had an opportunity to listen to an exhibition of the conference by. Deb Stewart.
I, I sat in on that, yes.
She's done an exceptional job and I kind of sensed maybe some of the conversation here was modeling. What it was based on from model.
Yes, yeah, the employee engagement surveys and those interviews and.
Yeah, she. Deb Stewart. From Mason does what she calls stay interviews. Other organizations do exit interviews or people are leaving. She's having interviews for people who are staying, who are there. So she. Met with individual with every single one that they had and sat down to find out how are they viewing the organization. Invested a significant amount of time to get that done. To continue to have that on program. I think those sorts of things that have been thought of here. As a way of making sure that you have a workforce that is happy and working, wants to continue. It is really expensive to replace employees. It's really one, and it, and it's almost impossible these days. If I want to work for any sin, in any, it is just hard. By people working these jobs. Want to try and make sure that, in my view. Want to make sure that. Best thing goes that far as to.
Yeah, and that pays off. I mean, it, it, we did it in education. One of the superintendents that I had out of seventeen. But things like that, the humanistic part of it pays off.
I have to apologize, you know, I keep offering my opinions here, you know, I don't work for you.
Well, that's good to hear.
Capacity, you know, and you, you know, so. I always try to make sure that I'm expressing the view that I am not city manager here, really, as your city manager. I can come here and offer opinions, but not really paying me for my opinions. You can take them or leave them, but. I'm just giving you some, some of my perspective on this, but that shouldn't influence your decision about what's right for Albion. I don't know this community, I only know this community a little bit. You know what's best for this community and this organization. So just when I express those opinions, recognize that they're opinions and that they're not gospel. You can take them or leave them. I think. Let that influence you.
I mean, like, I think you've mentioned that it's just difficult to find anybody who wants, I think, it's not just. In municipal work, but I think it's just across the board in every industry. Workforce is still a challenge and I don't know when we'll get a recovery from that. But I think that, like you were saying, it's really hard to attract people to come and work for the city government. People who have that work ethic, you know, that's what you need because we are short staffed. We have a small budget. And so it's a lot of hard work and just keeping people who are willing to do that hard work is a challenge. And we appreciate those that have stays.
Well, and the other part of it is hashing. Way you get that is by making sure that they're doing good work and, and, you know, showing signs of accomplishment. If they're feeling that they're a part of that effort to make it all even more successful, uh, they're going to be much more willing to show up and learn. There are plenty of people that just want a job to have a paycheck, but a lot of people that are passionate about what's best for our. Those are the ones that are, you know, that are the most valuable for the citizens who will then be ambassadors as well.
Cause I had a conversation with, you know, with a, an individual about. You know, the younger generation, like the twenty twos to the twenty fives. That's, that's that place where people should be trying to establish, but. I know a twenty-two-year-old who probably has fourteen different jobs in a year. That's not even keeping a job a month. It's just crazy.
All right, let's move on here. We can, how is it? It seems to be a significant priority for you, is for many other communities. The more you should think should be done in this area than you're doing. Any of the items down here that you don't think are important? So, one area that I did have a question about is, do you have updates on any more recent changes in new best practices? Are you looking to try and expand the range of housing options in the community? That's what I'm seeing in other communities where they're looking at. Loosening regulations so you can have a mother-in-law apartment, it's like a call, you know, a second, you know, a second smaller dwelling. Like accessory dwelling on the premises. It's a way in which some communities are finding that they can deal with the housing shortage. And cost of housing by looking at some of these alternatives, that sort of change you were thinking of.
Yes, doing just that, just to make sure that our zoning ordinance, we're not putting up roadblocks. To potential new development or, um, new housing developments that some developers are pushing. So just making sure that we are. Uh, I don't, accommodating or just where with the times to address this need.
Right. It's, it's an interesting, it's an evolving area of planning. To look at increasing density on lots. Uh, provide a range of options that has not been available in, you know, since the advent of zoning, um, you know. I don't know how old, how long you've had zoning here in the community, maybe many communities really got involved in that in the seventies. And zoning standards in the seventies is not the same as what people are looking at today. Zoning standards going way back, you know, there was this idea that you had to have large lots, that you needed to have lots of sun and air around dwellings. And now we're seeing that in many communities, uh, they're going back to what. Probably the smaller lot sizes that were, I suspect, typical of Albion at the time it was originally founded and was being developed. Those are now things that are being seen as an asset in the community. You have that greater density. And the opportunity then for having more housing in the same, same area, but also looking at. Are there ways to look at alternative types of dwelling units, the excessive dwelling and so forth on individuals. Applying for, you know, for starting to think about those areas.
We did a massive update to our zoning ordinance, was it twenty nineteen jail, I believe, is when we did that. But now, since then, we've had just potential projects come on board and we're reviewing on ourselves. It's like, well, why would we change that? Why would we not think to include that? So just making sure that we're continuing to evaluate and making sure, yeah, we're accommodating to the new. Best practices and the needs of. To meet this demand.
The final item on this list that's under this focus area is to develop some of the big programs, well, as to enhance community program and develop some, some of youth. Youth programs, this, you know. There's not a lot of good this one, uh, it, it almost seems like sort of an afterthought. What's this? How are you doing this? Is this a significant item for you, uh, to provide those opportunities for the community?
I think it's.
I seem to recall that conversation when I was here before.
Right. Um. I think it's a, um, that's, something that's necessary in the community. Um, I think investing in. Youth programming helps to create that communal bond at an earlier phase in, in children's lives. Um, outside of the school, high school pipeline, but, um. I think it creates touchpoints for, um. Caring, right? You get to see that the community actually cares about you through these different, um, events that you get to take part in. Somebody cared enough to at least think that you needed something to do, um, after school on a Thursday. You know what I mean? Um. I also think that there's an opportunity there for us to do, um, some cross. Lateral work with the police departments as well, um. Possibly facilitating different, um, or helping to facilitate different, uh, programming options for the youth. Not necessarily, um, them. Creating and doing it themselves, with them partnering with different organizations to maybe come in and do some of the, um, drug prevention. Conversations, maybe some of the, um, the, um. Other preventative, um, conversations that they can come in and have with the children as well. But also just having that touch point and being visible, um, growing up here in the community, we had, uh. Police officer that was a member of our church and he'd show up to church on Sunday. Um, he, you know, he's stopping for a little bit while on duty. And, you know, you just got to see him a little bit more than you probably would anyone else. So, you know, I think it's opportunity there.
Another way to think about that too is to recognize that as you are trying to need workforce. Introducing youth in your community to. Opportunities within this organization, it's a way to recruit them from the community. And I think that, think about particularly police officers in this region, just put all the not, the higher the amount of side organization. But four positions like that that you can fill for people to either grow within your community. They're created or likely once they're on the job, they're in the states. So, interesting, oftentimes think about, you know, programming recreational stands. But think about the fact that some of those programs can do that and also then, um. Introduce those young people who are career opportunities in the organization. That, that's just something we oftentimes don't think to do. One of the communities that served as interim manager, we've participated as a city organization in a career day of high school. And the whole idea, right, that public works there, maybe the police department there, you know, I don't know whether any of the. High school students were going to be influenced in terms of their career choices by that, oftentimes, you know, there. But it was an opportunity, and I didn't, I didn't talk, I was unsuccessful in confronting any of them, that they ought to be a city manager. But apart from that, it was intrigued by what the police department, and this is a small department. They were intrigued by what was going on with the, with the public works department. They had an opportunity to see people that were just like them. Come through that same school system and then had an opportunity to go where, where the, as a fellow. So I think that you're looking for ways in which, you know, you can engage youth and then encourage them to think about. Career opportunities through your programs. So, you know, something that will help, that's a long-term investment, but. You can find the one or two police officers out of your own community. Getting involved in that as a career, that can. Pay off significant benefits for you in the long run.
Always think back to, we used to have the program Earn, Learn and Play. My, my daughter just loved it because. They got paid a little bit of money and they had to put some in the bank and then, uh. When it got school time, they got to take their money out to help buy their school clothes and she just thought that that was the most fantastic thing. No, she didn't like cleaning the bathroom at the park, you know, it was, that was one of her responsibilities. And she learned that, you know, what responsibility is, sometimes you know, always like what you're doing and other times it's okay. And then Mr. Bonner used to have the program, he and. And, uh, Mayor Joe. Where they had, uh, students who came down and each council member had a student that. That they mentored to. How a city is for, city council, things like that is, I think is very important because it builds character.
Absolutely.
No, I think it.
Charlotte is the manager. She started working for the city as a co-ops. Never worked anywhere else. Just don't know the impact that there is have on somebody's life to make those opportunities available.
Right.
Be just exactly what we need for something.
Yeah, so I, I did mention the police earlier, but as we were talking, I was thinking, um, when we. Were in power for kids, we would go out to the, um, water treatment plant and, you know, it kind of gave us the. How the system works, but that's also another pipeline possibly for, um. Youth to be able to, you know, move into city.
Right.
Getting a job at the city.
Yeah.
It's another opportunity for it. Yeah, definitely.
Find somebody, if you've got a student in high school that's interested in chemistry. Getting them at the water, wastewater plant. Last community I worked, that was, you know, that's where we found one of our employees. He started working part-time, we tests in the lab.
Yep.
All right, let's move on. We're gonna, we're gonna come up against our eight o'clock hour here and, uh, and they're gonna, they're gonna throw me out. Um, the next, the third focus area is partnerships. Um, and this is an area that everybody's talking about. We don't get anything done. We get a lot of things done by collaborating with them. Anything here that you want to add on? Anything on this that you want to pick off?
Oh, we talked about putting healthcare here.
And I, I've already added the healthcare on as a.
Yeah.
Yeah. With healthcare, I say we probably need to add a healthcare system as well. Maybe we can possibly get a hospital out of it at some point. But, yeah.
We got a building. I see both of them come.
Yeah.
But leaky roof by now.
And then the, the fourth area, the fourth focus area is strengthening your financial position, increasing, asking to respond to challenges. And you're specifically looking at identifying funding sources. So you're really talking about leverage. That's, that's, again, another focus area for many communities is how do you leverage? What you have, dollars, talent, uh, people you know, who bring resources to the community. They help you get stuff. All right, well, we've gone on the list, and I haven't heard much come off, and I haven't heard much go on. So where does that, do you have mayor?
I mean, I think, I think by the fact that we are not saying. You know, this is no longer a priority. I still think there's work to be done in each of these areas. Um, I, I think that's reflective of all of us, you know, saying that. These are still important and we, we don't want to see anything come off, but I think kind of being framed. In the way that you approached tonight, we know that we have to keep things, um. Within reality. That, you know, the ball is rolling in the right direction and a lot of these, we just need to see it. Cross that finish line. And so we're not there yet.
You know, and I think the overall goal, all of us have. You know, and I think the overall goal, all of us have. All of us want the best for our community, it may be in a different manner, it may be using different methods or whatever. But, you know, the, the graph shows that, you know, we agree on one thing for sure, that's the roads. We, we agree on another thing, that's infrastructure, and we agree on a third thing, you know. That's building relationships and communication and things like that, so I think this really solidifies. You know, the overall objective of what we try to do at each meeting at one way or the other. Uh, it's, it's done differently, different methods or different ideas, but the overall objective is honorable. The o- overall objective, uh, is we want the best for our community.
Do any council members believe that anything else should be added that we have the authority to tackle?
I, I would like to see, um, support for like cultural events, but I think there's probably a way of doing that, um, through. Maybe a different board, possibly.
Partnerships.
Yeah, partnerships, um, one, one that stands out for sure is the, uh, Easter egg hunt is coming up. And I know that, um, just getting attention for donors is a major, um, hurdle for those guys. But it's a, it's something that they do for free, that they do for, you know, all the kids in the community, and there seems to be a lot of participation, but. Um. Us as a commu- uh, us as a city don't necessarily have any involvement in it. And, you know, of course, that's a hurdle for us because we can't just necessarily hand people money, but maybe we figure out a way that we can, um. We can support other community or cultural events as well, so that, you know, once they're turned down from these other places that they've gone to for. Or forgetting funding, or just the support of, hey, we stand behind this event and maybe if you do, you support it. So, I don't know, but, you know, legally, there's some stuff there, but I'm pretty sure we support a lot of things that don't necessarily. Have city support, but they get our personal support, so, you know, something to consider.
Courageous city manager, refine a little bit what's going on in here, establish timelines, establish the measurable objectives. I think one thing too that I was thinking of as Mr. Oregon's speaking is, make sure that there's a process in place to identify. These new ideas and make sure that you don't lose track of them, you know, we're gonna have an agenda here, but the idea that. You're gonna come up with things as the year goes along, you need to make sure there's a way to capture those things and then talk about them as you're getting into your natural. Make sure those things are not lost sight of you. Might not be able to work on them right away, but keeping them, keeping those ideas that are coming forward and thinking about whether they. Be incorporated in some of the other. My, my suggestion is devote some time and attention, and I know it's hard work to do, but devote some time and attention to finding the way you present that. So that there are clearly identified timelines, you're thinking, uh. Ways to measure the results that you're going to achieve, accomplishing which would be. Think it'd be helpful to the council as they're looking at maybe, so then again, a reminder that. This develops, this process goes on, you know, ultimately it comes down to dollars. That's where you will then go through a further refinement, and there's nothing wrong with having a major choice and saying. We can afford to do roads, we can afford to do dams, but I think that's an appropriate thing, that's how you express your priorities. Does, in those things aren't important, these things have to be pushed off and you're going to extend out the timeline. That's an entirely appropriate thing to do.
And city manager can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think, used about quarterly, she gives us updates, and where. Like where, how are we progressing with these goals, um, like she can pull up my, like, what has been happening within. City Hall to move towards fulfilling the goals.
Yeah, that's, that is important, and then think about how, we talked earlier, about how you communicate the most important, the most significant votes to the. Broader communities, I think that will help fulfill trust in the community, the support for. Kinds of choices that they need to develop and do. And I will offer, you know, if you need my guidance, uh, anything, don't hesitate to give it a call.
Appreciate that.
Send me a chat, I'll be happy to, we'll give you some, give you some guidance.
Appreciate that.
And thank you all, I appreciate, yeah.
Appreciate you as well. Do we have any future agenda items that we would like to ask on upcoming?
Uh, yes, I would like to get an update on what is happening at Wildflower. And the positive or negative impacts it's having on the city and what their future plans are in terms of continued growth.
Would you, would you like, um, the manager, the person?
Sure, I mean, manager, whoever, uh, January.
January, yeah, and I was thinking Journey the whole time, but it's January, yeah.
January has been here and, uh, she said that, you know, she would come back, but we haven't. Someone has mentioned it to me in terms of where do they stand, how is it impacting the city, um.
Yeah, one question I had was, how many people are moving from? The city out to Wildflower versus people from the outside moving in to Wildflower?
Now, Wildflower is in the city limits.
Oh, no question, but, but it's on the edge of the city limit, so what I, what I see, if we're moving people out of our city. To the edge, it's like the, the flight from the inner city to the suburbs, and, and so what does that impact have? On the housing stock in the city, uh, and so that's the, I mean, I think. Bringing more people to the city is a goal, and if Wildflower is helping us do that, fantastic. Um, and if, and if older folks are moving there because it's one level versus two, equally fantastic, but just seeing what the. I mean, I keep hearing that there's going to be four hundred units out there, and I, like, really? That doesn't seem, unless they're buying all. A lot more acreage than I, than I see now.
It's, it's expanded a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Might want to go out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I've noticed is a lot of young people have purchased out there, um, I can't speak to anybody else, just. The people that, um, I know that have purchased out there, um, it's been a lot of young people.
And if they're moving from apartments to housing, that's also fantastic.
And that's been the case with a lot of people.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
As well as senior citizens, we've had downsizing and, uh, people, but I'm wondering what impact does that have? To the set, is it a positive thing? Are they bringing money in or challenging?
Water bills and light bills, like.
Yeah.
In the city, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just an update in terms of where we stand.
And I would also like an update on, maybe it's coming from Virgie, like hearing rumors about a new grocery store coming to town. Like Dollar.
General.
General or EG or whatever it is, uh, in the old, um, Burger King lot.
Oh, I thought it was behind.
Again, again, having an update would, would help.
Behind this dump.
And they've already started stumbles off, the dentists.
On the east side?
Yes, on the east side.
So they've been there, actually building.
Oh, okay.
I saw the, the machineries and machinery and things like that, so something is happening there.
It's, it's basically stalled dentistry, it's not stumps anymore.
Yes. I know, we asked, I asked before about recreation, about Jill coming.
He's abroad right now, so. Abroad.
I think he's in England.
Second meeting in April. I believe Ikey Jones is planning to come give an update as well. Okay.
Cool.
Is there, um, any update as well, uh, about the senior housing? I know they did a lot of different, uh, surveys and all that, so can we get some update about senior housing?
I can reach out to the, the group or, yep, the committee that is handling that.
And this senior housing is different from the senior housing at Washington Gardner, because that's supposed, uh, is that veterans housing, uh?
I believe so, but I will reach out to, I believe Virgie's been working with them.
And Dr. Webb's series, I know, working, because that's the, the college building now, so.
No, they sold it.
They sold it.
They sold it.
Okay, they sold it?
You're talking about the middle school?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's senior housing going in there and there's senior housing going in somewhere else?
Yeah, I mean, Nancy is always, isn't it Nancy? But whoever that has that need, they have to look at my information.
Linda and Mark.
My, yeah, that's the difference, housing.
Is that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the one up here, the seeking something you need, so he's putting that. I don't know how mean it is, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Communication is.
There is a second development.
That would have been the first.
Potential.
The one that she was talking about first, yeah.
So the.
When I talk about is the first.
Stakes from. Yeah, that's in something in the works for.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, yeah, I think they're still kind of moving along, but, uh, the one that's going into Washington Gardner, is that? Senior housing, I thought it was veteran housing.
Yeah, that's why I said I don't call that.
Senior veterans.
All right, anything else?
Oh, we lost our last community member. They're the press.
All right, any other council member comments?
I appreciate having this done and we have a focus, we're going to have timelines.
We're leaving amicably and we're leaving before eight o'clock if our mayor.
And we're within schedule.
And city manager, would I say something?
Yes, I just have one comment, um, I'm not with Mary Spleater, she's on the, um, City of Albion Arts Commission, she asked that I share with everybody. The Albion's youth art exhibit, which will be held this Friday, March twenty ninth, from six to eight at the Levington Center.
Right, and then I believe they're gonna display, uh, artwork throughout the city as well in storefronts. From local use. All right, any other council member comments?
Do I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Lawler?
Sure.
And please excuse me for my.
You can't.
All in favor, say aye. All right, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Support, all in favor, say aye. Being adjourned seven fifty-nine P M. Thank you, Greg, for that.